Good evening, everyone. I want to call the city council meeting of July the 17th, 2012 to order. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Adams, Lewis?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Boudreaux?
Here.
Kenyon?
Here.
Petty?
Here.
Tennant?
Here.
Farrell?
Here.
Mayor Jordan?
Here. Would you join me in reciting pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of ninety states and states of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Tonight, under the consent agenda, we are going to remove item four.
That's correct.
And we need a motion to remove.
Second.
You don't really need a motion. It's going to be considered immediately after consent agenda because there's an amendment to it.
Okay. Well, hang on, everybody, and I'll just read what we've got then. All right, under consent, number one, approval of the June 19th, 2012, and July 3rd, 2012, city council meeting minutes. Number two, parkland dedication fees resolution approving a budget adjustment in a total amount of $38,426 recognizing parkland dedication fees from the northeast and northwest quadrants to be applied for additions to Gully Park and insurance proceeds related to destruction of Red Oak Park Playground. Number three, bid number 12-40, Lubbock Brothers Incorporated, resolution awarding bid number 12-40 and authorizing the purchase of one Dewey's ATM 72 LG slope mower from Lubbock Brothers Incorporated of Tulsa, Oklahoma, in a total amount of $41,209.40 for use by the Transportation Division, approving budget adjustment. Number five, bid number 12-49, Sellers Trading Post, resolution awarding bid number 12-49 and authorizing the purchase of two Rhino FR 180 bat wing cutters from Sellers Trading Post of Salome Springs, in a total amount of $30,192 for use by the Parks Department in wastewater treatment. Number six, bid number 12-50, Countryside Farm and Lawn, resolution awarding bid number 12-50 and authorizing the purchase of one mower conditioner from Countryside Farm and Lawn of Springdale in a total amount of $20,916.8 for use by the wastewater treatment. Number seven, bid number 12-42, Endless Power Corporation, resolution awarding bid number 12-42 and authorizing the purchase of one power generator from Endless Power Corporation in amount of $61,330 plus applicable sales tax for use at the Owl Creek Lift Station and improving budget adjustment. Number eight, bid number 12-54, Instrument and Supply Incorporated, resolution awarding bid number 12-54 and authorizing the purchase of three large water pumps from Instrument and Supply Incorporated in the amount of $88,800 plus applicable sales tax for use at the South Mountain Pump Station. Number nine, John David Brown settlement agreement, resolution approving a settlement agreement with John David Brown concerning condemnation litigation filed as part of the Highway 265 Water and Sewer Relocation and Improvement Project in a total amount of $46,666.50. Number 10, Richard and Karen Hannah settlement agreement, resolution approving a settlement agreement with Richard and Karen Hannah concerning condemnation litigation filed as part of the North Garland Avenue Improvement Project in a total amount of $1,600. Number 11, street name change, North Chrysler Drive, resolution renaming Chrysler Street between Vantage Drive and Mountain View Drive to North Chrysler Drive. I will accept a motion before the consent agenda is read.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda is read. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Farrell?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Okay, on number four that has been removed, let me read that. Bid number 12-48, Williams Tractor, resolution awarding bid number 12-48 and authorizing the purchase of one large square baler from Williams Tractor of Fayetteville in a total amount of $89,026 for use by the wastewater treatment and approving a budget adjustment. Correct?
Yes, Mayor, we just need a motion to amend the resolution to read as the mayor just stated.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve what was just read by the mayor.
To amend the resolution.
To amend the resolution is read by the mayor. Okay. Everybody good? All right. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Farrell?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Okay, under unfinished business, number one, amend.
Now we actually need to approve the resolution.
Sorry. All right. Need a motion and a second to approve.
I'll move second.
Motion and a second to approve bid number 12-48, Williams Tractor. Is there any public comment on this? See, now I'll bring it back.
I will note that the only change in this was the inclusion of sales tax. It was not included in the original amount.
Okay. Anybody got any final comments on this?
No.
Sondra, would you please call the row?
Farrell?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Okay, under unfinished business, number one, amend 173.08, Arkansas Energy Code. An ordinance to amend 173.08, Arkansas Energy Code of the Building Regulations Chapter of the UDC to adopt the 2009 International Energy Conservation Code for residential structures with amendments herein. Now, I understand that the city attorney does not want us to go to the second reading right now, but because he wants, because of the amendments that's been put on this, he wants to read the whole thing.
As noted, this went to the ordinance review committee.
Right.
And several changes were made at the ordinance review committee, and so I think that the whole ordinance probably needs to be read because many changes were made. So I think from right now, what would be in order is, is an amendment to the ordinance as presented in your packet on page seven, eight, and nine. I think you've all seen that, so if you, somebody would make a motion to amend it to that.
So moved.
Second.
All right. We have an amendment to the ordinance of the energy codes. You might want to read what those amendments are. Do you want to read the whole thing?
If they do, then I have to read the whole ordinance anyway.
Okay.
I'm going to do this correctly evidently. Mr. Farrell voted first at the last meeting, so I should be calling Lewis instead, so I'm going to be calling Lewis first from now on. Lewis?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
An ordinance to amend section 173.08, Arkansas Energy Code of the Building Regulations Chapter of the UDC to adopt the 2009 International Energy Conservation Code for residential structures with amendments herein. Whereas Fayetteville customers spend over $50 million annually for electricity and natural gas services, and whereas more efficient buildings can conserve energy, reduce stress on our electricity grid and natural gas supplies while saving money and resources for our citizens, and whereas improved building codes emphasizing energy conservation can reduce future energy consumption and the costs associated with energy production, and whereas the existing state adopted an amendment 2003 International Energy Conservation Code is inferior in comparison to the 2009 International Energy Conservation Code, and whereas pursuant to ACA 1455, 206, and 207, the City of Fayetteville has published notice in the Northwest Arkansas Times that the city council will consider enacting an ordinance to adopt and require all new construction and renovations to comply with the 2009 International Energy Conservation Code, three copies of which are available for public inspection and review in the Fayetteville City Clerk's office. Now therefore be ordained by the city council, City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1, that the city council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby repeals Section 173.08, Arkansas Energy Code of the Unified Development Code, and an act of replacement, Section 173.08 Energy Conservation Code as shown below. Section 173.08, Arkansas, no, Energy Conservation Code, subsection A, Commercial, the Arkansas Energy Code, its rules and regulations as adopted and promulgated by the Arkansas Energy Office, and as from time to time here and after may be amended, is hereby adopted by reference to ACA 1455, 206, and 1455, 207. Subsection B, Residential, the 2009 International Energy Conservation Code is hereby adopted by reference for all new residential structures with the exception of subsection 107 fees and section 109 Board of Appeals. Subsection 1, New Residential Construction. The 2009 International Energy Conservation Code is hereby amended by adding a provision requiring a home energy rating system, index rating for new residential construction. The City of Fayetteville requires that all new residential construction have a home energy rating system index rating completed by an independent RESNET certified home energy raider or equivalent prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Residential developments that utilize the exact same floor plan multiple times are required to have a HERS index rating completed on a minimum of 20% of the residential units. Subsection 2, sticker. A sticker provided by the city shall be posted in a very visible location near the front entrance of the residential structure indicating the estimated monthly utility cost as derived from the HERS index rating until the structure is sold or for at least 90 days, whichever is less. Number 3, additions, alterations, and renovations. All additions, alterations, and renovations to existing residential structures shall comply with the standards of the 2009 International Energy Conservation Code, but shall not be required to provide a HERS index rating or post a sticker. Where it is shown to be impractical to meet the 2009 International Energy Conservation Code, the building official may permit additions, alterations, and renovations to comply with the Arkansas Energy Code, its rules and regulations as adopted and promulgated by the Arkansas Energy Office, as from time to time hereafter may be amended. Subsection 4, repairs. All repairs to existing residential structures and mechanical systems need only be constructed to at least the same energy conservation standard as a damaged structure or mechanical system which need needed repair unless a higher standard is required by the Arkansas Energy Code. Fees. Subsection 107 fees of the International Energy Conservation Code is removed to reflect that only the city council can set required fees, and any refund policy, the code official cannot set fees nor refund policy. All fees shall be prescribed in the Unified Development Code. Number 6, appeals. Subsection 109 Board of Appeals shall be removed from the International Energy Conservation Code and have no force or application. Appeals of the building officials interpretation of this International Energy Conservation Code shall be heard by the existing Board of Construction Appeals, and no new Board of Appeals for interpreting the International Energy Conservation Code shall be created by this code. Section 2, that in order to adequately prepare the residential construction industry for the International Energy Code and the related new testing requirements, the effective date of the new code shall be implemented in stages as follows. One, all provisions of the adopted 2009 International Energy Conservation Code as amended shall become effective on September 3rd, 2012, with the exception that a certificate of occupancy may be issued even if a residential structure does not pass the air sealing, infiltration, or duct sealing testing requirements. Subsection 2, the HERS index rating and associated sticker requirement shall become effective on September 3rd, 2012. Subsection 3, all provisions of the adopted 2009 International Energy Conservation Code as amended shall be effective on March 6th, 2013.
Jeremy?
I last presented this item back on June 5th, and we left it to the ordinance review committee to make some changes, which Mr. Williams just read. Just very briefly, the concept here is to update our energy codes to, from the 2003 version to the 2009 International Energy Conservation Code, which is the codes that the state of Arkansas follows. We would be two versions ahead of the state. What the state utilizes and adopts is what most cities within the state follow. We are recommending that we move forward to the 2009 code. That recommendation came out of a task force that the mayor put together coming from a resolution that you all adopted a year ago in July, and that task force consisted of local builders, energy consultants, and professionals. And we, what we did is met, reviewed different energy codes, and did an analysis of what the cost, we took costs, building costs from those builders, what it would take to implement these different stages of energy codes, and compared those to the energy savings. And that's really where we arrived as staff and task force at our recommendation. We've also recommended the HERS index, the home energy rating system, be utilized in Fayetteville to essentially establish a performance metric that, that puts apples and apples comparison for home energy consumption. And we also believe the consumer will be much more informed as they purchase a new home. The amendments essentially at the, at the ordinance review committee that occurred had to do with mainly a discussion about whether additions, alterations, renovations, and repairs should be applicable. We took out repairs and essentially referred that back to the, the existing energy codes or whatever was there in place. We also, at the, on the advice of Mr. Williams, which I appreciate, we removed a couple of sections from the administrative chapter on fees and appeals. We already have a Board of Appeals. We already have a fee structure. There's no need to adopt a new one, and so we removed that as well. And then lastly, in section 2, we finally got, I think, language that, that fits what both the HBA group that we were meeting with and Home Builders Association group that we're meeting with, as well as the staff in terms of how to implement this in a staged way. And so we have a section there. Basically, what we're doing is adopting the 2009 code, the new performance testing on, on ducts and your infiltration or sealant of your home. We'll still do that testing. The builder will still be required to do the testing, but we'll, we will, the city will allow a certificate of occupancy even if you don't meet the new parameters for a six-month period. And that's what the March 6th date of next year is really looking to do, to allow some time for building up essentially to these new standards. I don't know if Alderman, Boudreaux has something?
Well, as chair of the committee, I just want to say that the committee did support this. We had some really good discussion, I think, about it and made good amendments to it. And so I certainly support it and hope we can get it passed tonight.
Okay. Matthew?
Well, I said a lot about why I think this is necessary at the last meeting, so I won't go there. I did have one thing I wanted to break up before public comment, and it's a bit of a mea culpa. The ordinance review committee meeting was a little bit time constrained, and most of our conversation was focused on whether or not to include repairs. There was one amendment that I didn't catch that I'm not particularly sold on, and I'm not going to make a motion right now, but I would ask that the public note this and during your comments, if you think, if you have a comment on this, to please say so. And that is originally, when this was proposed, the HERS rating index sticker was required to be displayed near the front of the entrance until the home's sold. And the amendment that I missed in ordinance review that we just made at the beginning of the meeting is, requires it to be displayed until the home is sold or until 90 days have passed, whichever is less. And I'm not sure that's a good amendment, but like I said, I'm not going to make a motion until we've heard what the public has to say about it.
Okay. Anybody else want to weigh in after public comment? I'm sure weigh in on there.
Jeremy might want to explain. That was his idea, and I think there's some good reasons behind it.
At, as staff, when we were looking at the final version of this, we had a concern because there are residential structures and small apartment buildings to which this would apply that are never intended to be sold, and so we didn't want the sticker to be there forever. And so we looked at simply a time period in which, a three-month time period essentially, in which the sticker would remain, whether it was to be sold or not, so it would at least remain on every structure that this applies to. But as you mentioned, the original version said it has to be there until it's sold. If the timeframe is something that, that needs to move, we're fine with that. We were simply not wanting to require something to be there forever, if, if the rental house or a small apartment or duplex that's really built and never intended to be sold to a, to a new homeowner.
Do you think it would meet your intent to say until sold or first leased?
I think so, yes. I mean, essentially, it's till someone moves in. It's really what we're, what we're after.
Sold or occupied.
Okay. All right. We'll take some public comment now. Everybody gets one turn to the microphone. Please introduce yourself. I know the city clerk has asked us to give your address, please. Once your turn is up, the only way you can come back is if an alderman wants to bring you back and ask you questions. Keep your comments directed to the chair. Be courteous. And who would like to be first? Okay. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council.
Would you like to make your amendment?
Yeah, I'll move that section 2 reads until occupied, if Jeremy thinks that meets the intent.
Sold or occupied.
Okay.
Until what?
Sold or occupied, or just until occupied.
Until occupied.
No, seconded.
Remember, sold or occupied kit. You got all that?
Yes, but actually, I think this is Jeremy's ordinance.
Okay, Jeremy, you got all that?
I do.
All right. All right. Do we have any comments on that? Is there any comments on the amendment? See, now I'll bring it back to the council. All right. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Lewis?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I move, we spin the rules and go to the second reading?
Second. I mean.
If you read that kit, wasn't that the second reading?
I think we're probably at the second reading already, so third and final reading.
Second.
No, motion and a second, go to third and final reading.
Can I ask a question, please?
Yes.
Were you saying you wanted that left tonight kit because you just read that again, or?
It, it was, it certainly wouldn't hurt to leave it tonight because it doesn't go into effect till September.
I was just wondering what these, your intent to try to move forward with the third, with the third reading tonight and vote on it?
I, I think I'm just recognizing that we didn't hear any comment tonight, and I don't see any harm in being expedient.
And it's already gone through ordinance review. I mean.
Does that mean plan to vote on it tonight, or just take it to third reading?
I would plan to vote.
I'd like to vote.
Well, okay. All right. Have we, we haven't voted on the motion yet, have we?
No.
Sondra, would you please call the row?
Lewis?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
An ordinance to amend section 173.08, Arkansas Energy Code of the Building Regulations Chapter of the UDC to adopt the 2009 International Energy Conservation Code for residential structures with amendments herein.
Okay, what final comments do we have in the council? Sarah?
So, just to add on to the discussion about going ahead and voting on it, I see that there's been a lot of work with stakeholders all through this process, and, and there are people here involved in, in this issue and this topic, and we thank you for coming, and it's an important topic, and I tell you the reason I wanted to sponsor it, and I appreciate all the work that's gone into it. It is a way to level the playing field in this area. It's a way to have better communication with consumers who are purchasing or leasing a home, and then it's a way to have, to help increase energy efficiency. And this is, this is long-term benefits for our community. If you have better savings in your energy, you have more disposable income, you have less reliance on, on whether or not you're working, and sometimes that's an issue right now. And so this is an important measure. One, it bumps up the, the standard to, to a level that is, is, also helps to create jobs, so that it, it creates an opportunity for people that have these skill sets to implement those skill sets and be part of the construction and, and that industry. So in every way, I feel like this is not just a good idea, but it was also well researched, well discussed with stakeholders, and I appreciate that process, and, and so I'm very supportive of this, and I appreciate all the work that went into it. Thank you.
What other comments do we have? Bobby?
Mayor, I think it's commendable that Alderman, Petty, and Lewis and staff want Fayetteville and its citizens to conserve energy. I favor incenting energy efficiency. But when I ran for office, the citizens in my ward asked if I would stand against discretionary mandated taxes, revenue measures, and city requirements pronounced to them by city-pass mandates that don't affect life or limb. Once again, we are asked to be the first in the state to accept an international standard that not only drives the homeowner cost up for new construction, but possibly requires existing home remodels or repairs to be subject to the hand of government. I would consider voting for an incenting ordinance, but I would betray the voters that elected me by supporting this, and now I will not do. Thank you.
Matthew?
When people have asked me about this over the last few weeks, I've said it's probably the most important thing I've done since I've been elected. And I just want first to thank the mayor and staff for, I think, really raising the bar on pursuing the partnerships we've had in getting this done. Whenever I first brought this up, and the mayor said that he wanted to put a committee together to study it and talk to the, and reach out to community groups like the Home Builders Association. To be quite frank, I didn't see the point. I didn't think it was possible to establish these kinds of partnerships and get this kind of buy-in, and I think it took vision to see if it was possible. And they got it done. They did it. They did something I didn't, I thought just couldn't happen. I think getting the Home Builders Association on board with this is kind of like getting the State Highway Department to build a light rail system. It's, it's hard and it's big, and so I wanted to thank you guys for that. To Bobby's point, you know, I like incentives, and I think that this proposal has incentives in it. It's a carrot and a stick. It does mandate new standards, and that's the bulk of it. But the incentive is the HERS rating. Right now, we have a race to the bottom where every developer tries to do just enough to meet code and just enough to make the house look like it's built well enough to buy. And that's the minimum everyone pursues, with a couple of exceptions. With the HERS rating, what we have is a race to the top, where now you're going to have consumers comparing houses and wondering, they can ask the question now, why does this cap, house cost $10,000 more to buy whenever it's got a HERS rating that's worse than this other one, and they look about the same. And so I think developers are going to begin to compete on that and race to the top, and will be incentivized through the market to do that. We talked a lot about the remodels, and when we took a close look at the 2009 code when it comes to remodels, I concluded, and I think the ordinance review committee concluded that the 2009 code is actually a little bit more generous when it comes to remodels than the 2003 code, which only offers a generalized exemption based on square footage. The 2009 code, the exemptions are set up so that basically anything that's usable can still, still be used in the house. It doesn't have to be replaced. But the biggest part of this, the reason I think is the most important thing I've probably worked to get done is because in 2008, I campaigned on the idea of a green economy, and we did the first step of that when we got the Green Jobs Training Center put together. And, but the thing is, most graduates of the Green Job Training Center, they don't have jobs to go to that use their new skills. And this isn't the whole pie, but it's the second piece. This is just about new construction, and now we need to start looking at existing housing stock, and we need to start looking at commercial. And those stuff will come when the time is right. But right now, this is the second piece, and it's going to open up a whole new green jobs market for those graduates and for other people that are coming to the area with that skill set. I, I can't overstate the importance of that, and that's why I think this is one of the best things, one of the most important and proudest moments, I think, of my elected career. So, thank you, guys.
Okay, what other comments do we have?
Mayor, I'd just like to ask Matthew a question. Matthew, you said we were on a race to the bottom, or had been on a race to the bottom. Do you think there's any other city in the state, class one city in the state of Arkansas that has the stringent requirements for building and, and development in Fayetteville?
Right now?
Yes.
Yes, in fact, most of the state is on the 2003 code. After we pass this, the answer will be no, will be the most stringent code. I do know that, I believe it's North Little Rock is looking at the 2009 code for commercial buildings, which if they pass, they would put them ahead of us on the commercial side, but still on the 2003 for residential.
I wasn't, I wasn't talking about just the, just the energy side. I was talking about the whole, the whole side for development. Pardon me. Requirements. You think there are many, pardon me.
Need some water?
No. You think there are many communities ahead of us, and, I mean, that we are not, we don't- You think there are many communities ahead of us, and, I mean, that, uh, we are not, we, our requirements... There are, there are some that are overall lower in the state than Fayetteville, than the class cities of the first class?
I think in Arkansas, Fayetteville does it the best, absolutely. And whenever we talk about what we can do better, I think we need to cast a wider net than Arkansas when we're looking for examples. We can look to other cities and look at their successes and pull in some of those examples to do here.
I respect you, but I respectfully disagree.
Sure.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Anybody good? I want to, uh, I wanna thank somebody that's here tonight. I wanna thank John Coleman. I see him sitting back there. And, uh, when I first came into this office, I will be honest with you, I did not know as much as I know today. But it's because of the efforts of John Coleman, working with sometimes a relatively stubborn mayor, and, uh, gave me some books to read. We began to discuss how we can make it better. And then I know that Aldrin and Patty came in, and he talked to me about this, and all the women, Louis. And, uh, it wasn't an easy transition, that's why I wanted to be sure that we took plenty of time. So, we spent a year on it, we put a committee together. And I know that Jeremy, Patty, and I would meet, one of us, we meet monthly with, uh, uh, Home Builders Association. Those were not always, well, we all had our ups and downs. And, but we came to, you know, some agreements on a lot of stuff. I know that went to ordinance review, you all looked it over. And I think, you know, and I, I think about myself, my home is, was built in nineteen sixty-four. I mean, you could probably do a hers rating on my house, and it would probably register wind tunnel. And I, and I, and I don't, I don't mean that. I mean, this, it was just, it's just an old home. Had these kind of codes been in place, I would not be having the energy costs today. And that's, was the bottom line for me, because I know that people are going to buy these homes, they're gonna be more energy efficient, at the end of the day, it's gonna save them money on their energy costs. It's gonna help reduce our, uh, CO2 emissions and, and cut back our dependency on fossil fuels. I think that's important. I think that's something that, that is gonna be the future, not only of the city, but the state, nation, and world. So, I wanna thank everybody that worked on this. And, um, that's all I got to say. Anybody else?
Call a question, I guess.
All right, we're ready to third and final reading. If there's no final comments, Sandra, would you please call the row?
Louis?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Budra?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
No.
Okay. Thank you all. All right. On new business. Uh, number one, amend one fifty-four point oh three, private parties zoning amendment. An ordinance to amend one fifty-four point oh three, private parties zoning amendment to clarify the powers of the planning commission and city council when a property owner seeks rezoning.
Whereas the provisions of section one fifty-four oh three, private parties zoning amendment relating to the planning commission should clarify that it cannot approve a rezoning request, but only recommend approval to the city council. And whereas subsection C should be repealed as, as it does not comply with statutorily required procedures for approving a rezoning request. Now therefore, it be ordained by the city council, the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, section one, that the city council, the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby repeal section one fifty-four oh three B of the Unified Development Code and enact a replacement, section one fifty-four oh three B as shown below. Section one fifty-four oh three B, action by planning commission. Now subsection one, the planning commission may forward the rezoning request as submitted or amended by the planning commission to the city council with the recommendation of approval. Subsection two, the planning commission may disapprove the rezoning request so that the rezoning request will not be considered by the city council unless the applicant properly appeals. Section two, that the city council, the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby repeal section one fifty-four oh three C and enact a new C as shown below. Subsection C, action by the city council. The city council may, by majority vote, approve and enact a rezoning ordinance as recommended by the planning commission or as requested by the applicant who has properly appealed the planning commission's denial of the requested rezoning. Subsection two, the city council may amend the proposed rezoning request and approve such amended rezoning ordinance by majority vote. Subsection three, that the city council may refuse to approve the rezoning request, which is thereby denied. Subsection four, the city council may, by motion, return the proposed rezoning to the planning commission for first, further study and recommendation. Now, Mr. Mayor, I brought this forward, uh, because, uh, during, uh, the Cleveland project, it was brought to my attention that it was possible that a petition was going to be presented, uh, from neighbors of the project, uh, using this particular, uh, section, uh, one fifty-four oh three C two, which was entitled "Vote", and that section says, "When a proposed amendment affects the zoning classification of property, and in case a protest against such change is signed by owners of twenty percent or more either of the area of the lots included in such proposed change or of those immediately adjacent in the rear thereof extending three hundred feet from the frontage of such opposite lots, then such amendment shall not become effective except by the favorable vote of three-fourths of the city council." Uh, when I first saw that, uh, I assumed, of course, that it was valid. It's been part of the Unified Development Code for decades. But then, as I further researched this, uh, I saw that, in fact, it did not comply with state law. Uh, by requiring a seventy-five percent supermajority to pass rezoning ordinance if a proper opposition petition has been presented, the Unified Development Code, section directly conflicts with at least three state statutes. State law provides that a rezoning amendment shall be, quote, "Made in conformance with the procedures prescribed in section one, uh, in fourteen fifty-six four-two-two, or by majority vote of the city council." That's, uh, uh, Arkansas Code annotated fourteen fifty-six four-two-three, entitled "Change in Plans". The, uh, section right before that, which is entitled "Adoption of Plans, Ordinances, and Regulations", states that ordinances recommended by the planning commission to the city council may be adopted by the city council, quote, "By a majority vote of the entire membership", and that, quote, "Nothing in this subchapter shall be construed to limit the city council's authority to recall the ordinances by a vote of the majority of the city council." So, there's two statutes, both of which are in the planning section of the, of the state code that says how you do zoning ordinances. Uh, both of these prescribe the procedure for adoption of the zoning code, and the amendment of that code and clearly specified that the permissible procedure for passing shall be by a majority vote of the council. The general state statute which prescribes the procedure for passing all ordinances by city councils also requires a simple majority. That ordinance says to pass any ordinance, a concurrence of, of a majority of the whole number of members elected to the council shall be required. And that's Arkansas Code annotated fourteen fifty-five two oh three, voting requirements for passage. Now, with these state statutes, all requiring a majority vote to pass an ordinance, the question I guess is, can the city council require a seventy-five percent majority instead of a simple majority? I think the clear answer here is no. Uh, in an earlier memo to you, I quoted the Arkansas Supreme Court in Brooks versus City of Benton, uh, nineteen ninety-two case, holding that the earlier quoted statutory procedural requirements are mandatory and must be complied with. Adopting a conflicting procedural rule that a seventy-five percent supermajority is needed for passage rather than a simple majority is not legally allowed. Let me quote from the Supreme Court, quote, "Cities have no inherent authority to enact legislation. The authority is dependent upon the Constitution and the General Assembly. Municipal zoning authority is conferred slow, solely by the state enabling legislation. Failure to comply with the mandatory procedural requirements of the enabling statute renders a zoning ordinance invalid." Now, this has been a very consistent, uh, uh, decision by the Supreme Court. I, I cited in a memo I gave to you, two other cases from the Supreme Court, uh, dealing with that. Uh, both of them calling for majority vote in the city council as the required state procedure. Uh, we must follow the state law, and state law prescribes a majority, not seventy-five percent for the vote. I also looked at attorney general's opinions. There, there were at least three that I noted, uh, to you. Uh, I noted, uh, Arkansas Attorney General Pryor's opinion in two thousand and two, where he said, "A municipality may not, by adoption of procedural rules, deviate from the requirements of state law." And, of course, this seventy-five percent would be a deviation from the requirements of state procedural law, so we may not do that. He stated that state law sets the required majority requirement for passage of such matters. A municipality may not adopt local procedural rules that conflict with the requirements of state law. I will also point out that procedure for the passage of ordinances by a municipality is not municipal fair under ACA fourteen forty-three six oh one, sometimes called the home rule statute. But rather, it is a state affair, subject to the general laws of the state. A municipality may not therefore deviate from state law on this issue, and that's the amount of the majority required to pass an ordinance. Uh, it's in agreement with, with earlier opinions. There was none in, in, uh, nineteen ninety-nine, which was the same way. It said cities are prohibited by state law from enacting any ordinance that is inconsistent with or contrary to state law. It is clear that under state law, that city ordinances, whether more stringent or less stringent than state law, must be consistent with and not contrary to state law. And state law says fifty percent majority, does not say seventy-five percent. And, uh, then, there's actually a very recent Supreme, uh, Attorney General opinion, uh, which was not dealing with ordinances, but it was dealing with how the power of, of the mayor to veto and the procedure for the, uh, the mayor to veto. In that particular case, uh, a city council had added additional requirements for the mayor. He had to report the reasons for the veto earlier than what the state law said. And the attorney generals there said, "That is not correct." In my opinion, the, given the legislature has clearly delineated the mayor's procedural obligations following a veto, it is equally clear that the city council cannot burden the mayor beyond those statutory obligations. Simply stated, a mayor is obligated to observe only the statutory procedural formalities, which cannot be enhanced by city ordinance. So, I think in this particular case, it is obvious that, that old ordinance, which was enacted, uh, long ago in a, in a very quick meeting by the city board of directors, with no discussion I could find in any of the minutes, and, and to my knowledge, has never been applied, uh... And that's why this issue has not come up before. Uh, I think that that ordinance is not valid, and therefore, that's why I have suggested that we change it and change the Unified Development Code so it is in compliance with state law.
Okay. What questions do we have, the city attorney? Sarah?
So, generally, and this is a process question, and maybe for Sandra, actually, is petitions that, that are presented now, is there a particular process for that now? Or I've seen them presented during council meetings, or can they include those in the packet? I mean, they can be included in the, in a council packet or not, or?
Normally petitions, anything that we receive on an agenda, uh, is included in the packet. If we get it in time for the tentative agenda, we include it in the tentative agenda. If we get it in time for the final agenda, we include it in the final agenda. If we don't get it till after the final agenda, we include it in that record or permit record.
Okay. And, cause I've seen them in the packets and here and some different places.
Right, there've been many petitions submitted on numerous issues, but this particular provision saying, well, now that we've submitted a petition, you have to have seventy-five percent vote, that issue has never come up before, to my knowledge.
It's only for zoning in this case.
Well, the Unified Development Code is, is for zoning only, yes.
And, and I probably should be clear on that. We get petitions also for other items, recommendations, and initiatives. So, all we're talking about is petitions on an agenda item that's going for the city council currently.
Just think, Sarah, Mayor. Sarah, I was just gonna say, back before we went paperless, uh, through the computers, it seemed it wasn't out of the ordinary at all to have, you know, our packets sometimes would be that big, especially with the contentious deal. We had, we had petitions all the time.
And petitions are fine, and they're, this is not saying there shouldn't be petitions. It just says that even if there are petitions, you still are bound by the state law that a majority control is not seventy-five percent.
Okay. Mark?
I understand this, and I, uh, we certainly want to be in compliance with the law, but we do have to be realistic, and I guess what, what the concern is, one is the timing, and the other one is, there is, uh, a, it looks like that we're taking, uh, some type of, uh, process that, in the past, protected neighborhoods, and is taking less, uh, protection of a neighborhood that's already established, that has an organization to move forward. So, I guess what, what we need to do is to be sure that we understand that there still is a way that a group of individuals around the zoning still has input. They still have the authority to come forward to, with an appeal to a city council member. The member can bring it to, so the, the, the appeal is still in pro, the process is still there. It's simply the vote. The discouraging thing about this and the way that we're set up with wards is the fact that only two individuals represent a specific ward that might have a specific need. And so, there's an imbalance, perhaps, in some perception when you look at two versus the other six. And that's, that's the concern that I'm getting whenever people are calling me. Uh, we have to, we have to meet the state law. There, there is certainly discussion in some, uh, areas where they're concerned about zoning changes. I know, uh, as we hope our economy improves, there's going to be requests for more zoning changes. And so, it's going to possibly be more contentious. And so, I certainly appreciate all the work that's gone into this, and I, I don't question it. It is a concern, and in order for better information to be disseminated to neighborhoods or to property owners, I hope tonight that we will have the first reading, and that information will be out to help handle the, uh, concerns that individuals have, uh, regarding the change, because there are some, there is a, um, a perspective that this is being, uh, presented because of certain activity that is currently hot topics around the city. So, uh, I just wanted to say that I've always, uh, everyone knows this, I've always worked to help represent, uh, property owners in established neighborhoods to help protect the integrity of their neighborhood, and this is a concern to me, but we certainly have to meet state law at the same time.
And let me say, there's certainly no rush on this at all. This has been on the books for decades, and so there's no rush to immediately, uh, do a repeal. It's just my job as city attorney, when I see something and it's brought to my attention that I believe is, is illegal, that I need to bring it to y'all's attention and ask for a remedy on that. But I'm sure not, I'm not telling the city council that, that you need to drop everything and immediately, you know, pass it tonight.
So, you wanna hold it on the first reading, Mark?
Yes. Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else, I'm gonna take some public comment. What public comment do we have on this? This will be left on the first reading. There will be two weeks. I would just leave it on the first reading, look at it again in two weeks. But is there any public comment on this? See, now I'll bring it back to the council. We're gonna leave it on the first reading, unless y'all wanna discuss anything else on this. Okay. Number two, amend one sixty-seven point oh four, tree preservation and protection during development, and one seventy-seven point oh five, street tree planting standards. An ordinance made one sixty-seven point oh four, tree preservation and protection during development, and one seventy-seven point oh five, street tree planting standards of the code of Fayetteville to provide a fixed amount to be paid into the tree escrow account rather than reasonable maintenance cost estimates. Kit?
Read ordained by the city council of the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, section one, that the city council, the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amends the first paragraph of subsection J four of section one seventy, one sixty-seven oh four, tree preservation and protection during development of the code of Fayetteville, so that after amendment, it shall read as follows, quote, subsection four, tree escrow account. Tree preservation onsite is always the preferred option, with onsite mitigation, offsite preservation, and offsite forestation to be considered in descending order only if the more preferred option cannot be fully achieved. If none of these options can completely fulfill a developer's obligation under this tree preservation and protection chapter, the developer shall pay into the city tree escrow account two hundred and fifty dollars for each tree required to meet the base density requirements, which fairly represents the cost of material and labor to plant a tree. The developer shall also pay into the tree escrow fund four hundred and twenty-five dollars as three years of...
dollars as three years of maintenance costs to ensure each tree survives for that period of time. Tree planting and maintenance costs should be reviewed at least every four years to ensure it remains the fair market cost for tree planting and maintenance for three years. Section two, that the city council of the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, hereby amends subsection A two F of section one seventy-seven oh five, Street Tree Planting Standards of the Code of Fayetteville, so that after amendment, it shall read as follows, subsection F, approval of a maintenance agreement and landscape establishment guarantee shall be contingent upon the developer depositing with the city of Fayetteville one of the following currency, bond, irrevocable letter of credit, or other surety. The amount shall be equal to that provided in section one sixty-seven oh four, J four, which is what I just read.
Hi, I'm Megan Dale, the urban forester for the city of Fayetteville. We're here tonight to propose amendments to assign a value to the maintenance of trees, which is already in the ordinance, as discussed. So the tree preservation ordinance says that the developer should cover the cost of the tree and the maintenance, and the city council had determined that the price of those trees was two hundred and fifty dollars, but we did not have reasonable data for the price of maintenance. So therefore, we went and did a competitive bid in this last year for a large number of street trees for three years, and that maintenance uncovered.
Megan, can I interrupt you a minute? Is that, excuse me just a minute, y'all there, hang up. Is this the international students? Do you have them come in? I'm sorry.
Probably is.
I just now noticed them as they were leaving. Hang on just a minute. Come on in. Excuse me just a minute. Yes. Would you introduce the international students force, please?
This is a group of pre-academic, frolic bright students, seventeen students from fifteen countries who will be, who have been here for three weeks and will be here for about another three weeks, preparing to start master's programs in several universities in the United States. And they are here tonight to just experience a little bit of city government in Fayetteville.
Would y'all stand up and be recognized, please? Thank you for coming. Now, Megan, continue.
Okay. So we had put out this bid, the maintenance bid, and that covered watering, which I don't need to remind you, given the last two summers, is very important, and mulching, which helps retain moisture and pruning. So the city council approved this maintenance contract, which was a value of a hundred and forty-one dollars and sixty-seven cents per tree per annum, or a hundred, four hundred and twenty-five dollars per tree for three years. So currently, the money that's deposited into tree escrow to meet the preservation requirements is two hundred and fifty dollars a tree. This only realistically covers the installation of trees. We don't have any money covering the maintenance. And maintenance, especially during these first three years, gives those trees a much better chance of survival. I just wanted to reiterate that paying into the tree escrow fund is the last option that we like to look at. We like to see preservation as the number one option, onsite mitigation. So with it being the last option, we're hoping that developers will be designing their, or the developers who design their sites around preservation won't receive as big of a hit. Regarding the landscape requirements, the developers are required to submit a bond for three years to maintain these trees, and we're hoping that this will encourage them to take better care of their trees instead of having them die and then having to replant young trees. The idea is to establish the canopy instead of having to redo this every, after three years, plant new ones. And then, it's been a reoccurring trend for developers to want to walk away from their bonds, which leaves the city in a predicament, given that we don't have enough money to cover the amount of trees that we approve them to remove. So, a project comes through, planning commission, city council, we allow them to take out certain amounts of preservation, and then if they walk away from the money with only two hundred and fifty dollars, we're, instead of planting, for example, we had somebody walk away from an eleven thousand dollar bond, and we were, they were supposed to plant forty-six trees, and we're gonna only be able to plant sixteen. And there's an instance where a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollar bond is about to possibly be walked away from, and that would, six hundred and eight trees would go down to two hundred and twenty-five trees that the city can plant. And we also don't necessarily have the resources to do all the planting in-house. So we like to encourage the developers who are developing their sites to plant the trees, to maintain them, to help grow our urban infrastructure.
Miranda?
I have a question. You referred to some of these examples of how developers had, were gonna walk away from so many that they had planted. So they had cut down that amount of trees, or a certain amount of trees.
Correct.
So we had lost that tree canopy.
We've lost the tree canopy. This was an instance where they had bonded the trees. It was the maintenance bond, and they said it was just cheaper for them economically to walk away instead of, to replant the trees and to maintain them. So, but as, we're obligated as a city to take the money that we have from that bond and use it on that project.
Right, right.
Molly?
Would you have any kind of an idea or figure of what percentage of the trees that are planted, required to be planted, make it for three years?
The ordinance states that there needs to be a ninety percent survival rate, and after that, those trees are then...
I'm not talking about...
Just to give you an idea.
Realistically.
Realistically, the people who maintain their trees pass the ninety percent survival rate. The ones who don't water typically don't pass, and there's a sixty percent survival rate, a twenty percent survival rate, a six percent. I mean, you can tell who maintains and who doesn't.
Okay. Thank you.
Then we end up maintaining it, sort of kind of.
Oh, don't, I'll wait.
Anybody?
Well, again, I want to emphasize, I mean, from what you've said, I mean, they have removed some canopy of trees. So, I mean, if they hadn't done anything, you know, I mean, then I could understand us not charging anything, but they have removed, and I think you made a point at the agenda meeting, too, that this might also encourage people to keep the trees that they have sometimes on the development rather than mitigating for, you know, putting money in lieu of.
Right. The money that they would make off selling X number of lots would be almost equal to the amount of preservation, not equal, but it starts to even out instead of...
Balance out, right.
Just asking, well, can I clear the entire site to start with? And, you know, that's an option. We discourage them. That's, you know, the last...
Right.
We'll take some public comment. Everybody gets one turn at the microphone, unless an alderman brings you back up. Please introduce yourself and where your address is, and keep your comments directed to the chair, which would be me, and who would like to be first?
Aubrey Shepherd. We're in Sierra Club hat with this comment. Goes way back when Sierra Club and League of Women Voters actually passed the, dropped the lawsuit that was designed to not really punish, actually do a favor to the city and save some money for tree preservation after council, which did not include any of you at the time. Anyway, we all remember it, I think, and so the, this is just going back a little bit, because after the lawsuit...
Aubrey there having some trouble hearing you, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. After that lawsuit, the council's response was actually to weaken it some more and allow more mitigation, and that was getting further away from the spirit of the ordinance. The sin of the council in allowing exception to it at the coals or steel crossing site was not really as bad as letting, allowing more mitigation after that. So here, we're trying to get back, I believe, toward the original intent and the wording of the ordinance to encourage people to keep the canopy. All this talk we just did about saving energy, a shady yard saves a lot of energy in shade trees, so that the wind blows through those shade trees before it hits your house, really makes a difference, winter and summer. So, please, please pass this. Thank you.
Thank you, Aubrey.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Aubrey, where you been? We've been missing you.
I think in the past month, I've been to more meetings than you have.
I don't doubt that, but I just, I thought, man, I'm looking for the green man, and I just, we haven't seen you in a while. I'm glad you're back.
Well, glad you're here and sorry you're leaving the council. We have great respect for your point of view. Thank you.
Who else?
Oh, good.
See, now I'll bring you back to the council.
I think we've got a second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go to the second reading. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Lewis?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Tenet?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
An ordinance submitting section one sixty-seven oh four, Tree Preservation and Protection During Development, and section one seventy-seven oh five, Street Tree Planting Standards of the Code of Fayetteville, to provide a fixed amount to be paid into the tree escrow account rather than a reasonable maintenance cost estimates.
Spin the rows and go to the third and final reading.
Let me do that, and then we'll take final comments. How will that be, Sarah?
That's fine.
Sandra, would you please call the row?
Adams?
Lewis?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Tenet?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
An ordinance submitting one sixty-seven oh four, Tree Preservation and Protection During Development, and section one seventy-seven oh five, Street Tree Planting Standards of the Code of Fayetteville, to provide a fixed amount to be paid into the tree escrow account rather than a reasonable maintenance cost estimates.
Final comments from the council, Sarah?
So, basically, the two reasons I will support this is, one, that it does provide an incentive to first preserve, more an incentive to preserve, and I tell you, certainly it does relate to the energy, and not only that, tons of stormwater savings costs. So you're talking economic impacts here. But also, when I, I remember when I was going door to door, when I was campaigning, one of the primary issues that came up was the frustration that citizens had not received the tree that their, that the developer had intended to put in, because that, something had happened to the business and it didn't continue, and so therefore, they never got their tree. And I feel like this is one way to further ensure that the consumer will be provided with the components of their property that they were entitled to. So, I appreciate the work. Thank you. Good idea.
What are the comments that we have in the council? Sandra, would you please call the row?
Lewis?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Tenet?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Okay. All right. What announcements do we have from the council or staff? Anything?
Mayor, the special parks board meeting that was called for Wednesday to discuss the Frisco Trail project has been canceled and will be heard at the next regularly scheduled parks board meeting.
All right. Anything else?
Just to encourage people to try out the new trail. It's coming...
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's exciting, and as Board four representative, it's going west, which I'm very excited about, so thank you.
All right. Anything else? All right. We're adjourned.